Okay.
All right, good morning, everybody.
I had him in mail.
We're, we're on the record now. Today is Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The time is ten oh-two. And the board is here to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Board of Commissioners, let's see, well, we will do a roll call, myself and Commissioner Daley are present. And could we go around the room introducing ourselves for the record?
Brad Smith with the Assessors Office.
Jennifer Holly, Clerk's Office.
Paul Perkins, Ada County Procurement.
Kathy Corliss, Ada County Procurement.
Mike Work, Operations.
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Weall Muthson, Development Services.
Jeremy Cameron, Operations.
Daisy Lewis, Clerk's Office.
Nick Cochar, Good Communications Agent.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Luke Tavish, IT.
Rick Arnold, Assessors Office.
Beth Lawn, Treasure.
All right, we don't have anybody on WebEx today. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are.
All right, well, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the agenda to remove Agenda Items six, eleven, C, and D, Agreement Number one-five-one-one-seven, and one-five-one-one-seven dash one dash twenty-three, and Information Technologies Request.
All right, I will go ahead and second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, we will move on to, let's see. You have a correction to the record from the Assessors Office, correct?
That's correct.
All right, could you tell us about that?
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman, or guess he's not even here, so. Commissioners. Yeah. Yeah, we have tax cancellation, it was on the agenda last week, and it was in our error. We attempted to correct an occupancy, but we had already previously corrected that, so it, there was really no tax dollars to adjust off since it was already adjusted. So it was an error where we kind of threw two things out there at the same time, but we'll make sure that doesn't happen again, and we'll get it cleaned off for last week.
All right, do we need to make a motion on that, or we just note the correction?
We have a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the correction to the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three agenda. No, I'm sorry. I move to remove the unfinished business, is that the one?
No correction to the record.
Correction to the, to the record. Okay, that's, that's a, to correction to the record.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we'll move on to unfinished business. Do we need a motion on that, or did we do that already? We moved to change the agenda. I guess I would entertain a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So this is business on the revised findings of fact and conclusions of law for two-zero-two, one-zero-two, eight-one-six dash A, Johnson May. Do we have anybody to speak to that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, this is related to the decision that the board made at the December fourteenth public hearing to approve an appeal and overturn the decision that our Planning, Zoning, Commission made to approve a cell, cell tower. So these findings are just presented to you for your consideration today to support that decision that was made on the fourteenth.
All right, is there any further discussion on this item? And this is an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval for conditional use of a commercial cell tower. If there's no further discussion, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the revised findings of fact and conclusions of law for application number two-zero-two-one-oh-two-eight-one-six dash A, Johnson May.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And now we'll move on to unfinished business with procurement. Award of bid three-zero-two-two, ARPA Boise Riverbank Stabilization Project, two thousand and twenty-three. Tabled from January tenth.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley. Before you this morning, under unfinished business is bid two-three-zero-two-two, the ARPA Boise Riverbank Stabilization Project, two thousand and twenty-three. And our evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for this project and would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for your consideration.
All right, if you could read that into the record.
Yes, happy to. Letter dated January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement. Regarding bid two-three-zero-two-two, dear members of the board, after reviewing the bid submitted, it is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two-three-zero-two-two to Knife River Corporation Mountain West as the lowest responsive bidder for the total bid amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
All right, do we have a, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendation of the Evaluation Committee and award bid twenty-three-zero-two-two, ARPA Boise Riverbank Stabilization Project, Number two thousand and twenty-three, to the Knife River Corporation in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred.
Yes, two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred.
And I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners, appreciate it.
We'll move on to new businesses. We have catering permits, new license. Do we have a motion on that?
I move to approve the license as listed in the agenda, including one catering permit and one new license, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, we will move on to the Clerk's Office. Do we have anyone from the Clerk's Office here to give a report?
No report at this time.
Okay, thank you, Daisy. We can move on to the Claims Journal. Chair would entertain a motion.
I move the author, to authorize payment of the, of claims on the Claims Journal dated January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll now move on to the Personnel Actions. Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And now we'll have a report from the Assessors Office.
Thank you. Not a lot to talk about this morning. We are at the peak of our tax cancellations, so you won't be seeing quite so many of those. We're kicking off the property tax reductions and accepting application for those. We did just receive the year-end stats from MLS, so those will be available soon. And we're starting to see some legislative activity, including House Bill five-sixty-two, which, you know, Brad can talk about a little bit if you want.
Yeah, this is actually existing legislation, but House Bill five-sixty-two is what has caused the, all the tax cancellations, because there's no proration on that. But I think that's something our office is going to be reviewing, kind of down the road, and see what the legislative side does this year. And then there's, it's also in District Court, there's a couple counties that have filed against what the Tax Commission recommended, but we are going to be reviewing our process and how we, how we deal with these, I think, for next year, so.
All right, do you have any questions?
I just have a question. You, you said that there is legislation to clarify from House Bill five-sixty-two, to make it clear, what, what, what is, what does the bill do? Does it go with proration, or the?
So, so just, there's, there's nothing in the works right now over the legislative side for House Bill. House Bill five-sixty-two has already passed, but it's causing, you know, it's causing a lot of tax cancellations, and it's pulling money away from the districts right now with no proration. So with it being in District Court and that being challenged, we're definitely keeping our eyes on that to see how that progresses. And then we'll be watching the legislative side to see if there's any changes there, but.
Nothing's proposed it legislatively at this point.
Correct.
It's just being talked about.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, so we're hopeful. I mean, we'd like to see it go down the road where it's not causing all these tax cancellations, and it's not pulling money away from the taxing authorities, and it's, and it can be prorated, so we're, we're hoping it starts going down that road, but we'll see, so.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion on the tax cancellations?
I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for two thousand and twenty-one, forty-seven tax cancellations for two thousand and twenty-two, and one casualty loss, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And now move on to a report from the Treasurer's Office.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Daley. The Treasurer's Office sent two tax notices last week. So one is for delinquent notices for the primary role, that was due December twentieth. And then we also sent tax bills for the subsequent role. So should you or your staff receive phone calls, feel free to direct those to us. I'll also note that there is some draft legislation related to property tax relief, and that applies to, in its draft form, to parcels that are eligible for the homestead exemption in August. So we're just now starting to take a look at that and any of the deadlines and due dates. Again, it's still in its draft form, but we want to make sure that it's something that, you know, we could implement effectively. So we're taking a look at some of the administrative impacts, because some of these changes, they do require, like, programming to our IT or to our stationary forms like that. So we'll be, this next week, taking a close look at this proposed legislation. They would take a portion of sales tax collections and dedicate that towards property tax relief. So, since early four, but we'll be working on that.
So it, it may, you, you said it may actually impact our ability to act, to do this. So is the legislature in the process asking counties that question and helping to write the legislation so that it won't negatively impact us?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daley, yeah, so I C has reached out to, at least to the Treasurers for feedback on how we could implement, implement this.
So, and they are actually, they, the legislature, is considering our comments? We hope.
It, it appears that way, yes.
All right, thank you for your report. We'll move on now to Expo, or no, we'll move on to Approval of the Minutes. Do we have a motion?
I move to, to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now have Expo Idaho Interim Events. Is there anyone to speak to that? Let's see, Bob. Any questions? If not, Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the six interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll move on to Parks and Waterways. We have three, three events coming up. Is there any discussion? Well, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the three Barber Park Education and Event Center Agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're now on agreements, and a couple of those have been removed. One-five-one-one-seven has been removed. One-five-one-one-seven-one-two-three has been removed. Does anybody have any questions or wish to speak on any of these agreements? There's one for a ATM machine in the county. Is that under the Treasurer or the clerk, the ATM machine?
Mr. Chairman, the agreement's under the Treasurer's Office, but the service is predominantly used by visitors to the Clerk's Office.
Generally to pay tickets or court fees or things like that?
Correct.
All right, did you have any questions on any of these?
No, no, I don't.
All right, well, in that case, the Chair would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the sixteen agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Except the right number sixteen with the two minus off?
Good question.
It should be fourteen, but it's two removed, it says.
All right, if you want to restate your motion then.
Thank you for that correction. I move to approve the fourteen agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We'll now move on to Indigent Services, usually indigent items. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Service Staff as listed on the summary of cases dated January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Is there any other business before the board? If not, we are in recess. Thank you, everybody. All right, welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Time is ten-twenty a.m. This is the meeting of the Board of Ada County Emergency Medical Services District. Myself and Commissioner Daley are present, and we have Sean Raines from EMS, and please identify yourself for the record.
Nick Cochar, Good Communications Agent.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Luke Tavish, IT.
IT guy. All right, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
And we'll move on to new business, move on to the Claims Journal. Is there a motion?
I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regarding EMS expenditures.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we're on Personnel Actions. The Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Now we're on Approval of Minutes. Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we have an Agreement Number one-five-one-two-seven. Agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services District and Claire Dutton for Idaho State University Paramedic Program attendance. Would you like to speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, good morning. Good morning, Commissioner Daley. This is the last agreement you'll see. This is one of our EMTs that is attending the ISU Paramedic Program. And as I've said before, with the rotating schedule, they're going to have to attend class while they're technically on duty. And so what we've asked of them in the agreement is that they repay us that time back in a contract, the time that is spent down there in class.
That works out pretty well.
Yeah, that's, ISU is our biggest pipeline for, for paramedics. And so we want to continue to have the ability for our EMTs to be able to go to that paramedic class and come out as a, a full paramedic.
That was going to be my question as well, is how's that, how's that, that's working really well, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, ISU has predominantly been our biggest pipeline for paramedics. You know, we, we attract several from out, out of state, but as you may have heard with other jobs, it's very difficult for somebody to come into this area if they don't have housing established already. You know, they're, they're making decent money on the new schedule, but still very difficult to find, find housing. And so we will continue to, to utilize, ISU can support that program so that we ensure that we have a steady stream of paramedics. Recruitment and retention is one of the biggest issues that we face in EMS, not just here, but nationwide. I mentioned a while back that in two thousand and twenty-one, nationally, there was a net decrease in twenty-one percent of our EMS providers. That's with all the people that, you know, new people going through the training. Just twenty-one percent of the folks just didn't renew their, their National Registry certification, so. Pretty troubling for the industry, but one of the issues that we're working with the state on the Sustainability Task Force of trying to identify some issues that allow us to, you know, better recruit and retain paramedics and EMTs, not just at Ada County, but certainly with the volunteer, small agencies around the state, too.
All right, any other questions? Not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Agreement, Agreement Number fifteen-one-twenty-seven as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're on EMS update.
Yes, good morning again, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Daley. Start off with the influenza-like illness report that I, that I give every week. It's actually trended downward at like four-point-one-five now, so. It's gone down pretty significantly in the last week, and it seems like it's trending downward. It does seem that in the past we'll hit three and just kind of hover around three, so that's good, good news. Beyond that, an update from our meeting with the, the Division of Medicaid last week, last Friday. The, they're going to submit the state plan before March thirtieth, which is good news. The consultant group working with the Fire Chiefs Association is sending over a draft state plan. They may have sent it yesterday, it was either yesterday or today. What Medicaid is going to do is submit an informal submission of that state plan to CMS so that they can, you know, in their words, kind of get their mind around what we're trying to do in Idaho. But at the same time, starting the, the public comment period, Idaho requires sixty days of public comment. So that puts us in line with, end of March submission date with the plan submitting the formal state plan sometime around March twentieth, which actually backdates the, the payments available for that program to January first of this year, so. It was a, a good meeting. The Medicaid Director wasn't there, but her CFO was, and, and very positive, so things are moving forward.
So when we, when we, when they create the state plan, how do they engage us in helping them, our part of it?
The, so what they, Commissioner Daley, what they've asked us to do is, because the, the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association was the one that ran the bill last year, and I'm actually. And, uh, I'm actually the Chair of the G M T Committee for the Fire Chiefs Association. They've asked us to help, uh, continue the process moving forward of doing some of the work. Um, some of that will involve going out and educating the different agencies within the state. And we have a plan, uh, basically have divided the state up into six different areas that the E M S Bureau has used for town hall forums, uh, to go out and talk to folks about what the program is, what it can do for them. Um, I don't know if I mentioned last week, but there's a number that we've heard repeatedly that eighty-five percent of E M S agencies in the state of Idaho, very small rural volunteer agencies, don't bill for their services. And unfortunately, they wouldn't be eligible for the G M T funds because you have to bill for services to be able to, to, uh, receive that money. So going out and encouraging those folks to start that process, the state is actually looking at, um, the ability to hire a statewide billing contractor. So, um, that's part of the issue is, you know, if you have a very small rural department where everybody's, um, either part-time or completely volunteer, somebody has to spend enormous amount of time submitting those bills to, you know, the variety of different insurances and C M S and ensuring compliance. And so if the state E M S Bureau can hire a contractor that people can utilize uh, and run their billing services through that contractor, it benefits, you know, the smaller agencies. So those are some of the ideas coming out of that Sustainability Task Force. But we will be involved in the, the process all the way through, um, uh, as we submit our first cost reports next year um, and continuing on in the future to help other agencies that aren't participating.
Yeah, that, that was going to be my next question because i- in terms of, I, I worked on Medicaid in schools and that, that was one of the deficiencies there is the small rural school districts didn't have the ability to do what you just described.
Okay, yeah.
That's why I asked that question is how, how are they engaging everybody in the process to make sure, uh, you, you said they may be actually, they meaning the state, maybe hiring somebody?
The state, yes.
To help small entities do that?
Yeah, and, uh, uh, basically what they, what the idea is, is they would hire a billing contract. Right now, um, they actually, the state provides what's, uh, called an electronic patient care reporting system at no cost to these smaller rural agencies. Um, it's called PERCs, but the state provides that. So the same kind of idea that a billing service, you know, they, let's say they would take a four to six percent fee off of the bill, um, but the bill would run through them. It wouldn't cost the agency any money that they aren't already getting because they're not getting any revenue if they're not billing. I've been encouraging those folks to do that because then that billing company has all the expertise to do that and remain compliant with, uh, you know, the, the federal guidelines and insurers and HIPAA and all of that kind of stuff. So, um, that's a, that's one of the ideas that has come out of the Sustainability Task Force to help those rural agencies. The other thing it does is, um, when agencies in the, the state don't bill, from what I understand, it actually drives down our reimbursement, even in Ada County or, uh, any, any, uh, agency that's billing for service because they, they average that all out. And so for these agencies that aren't billing anything, it comes in as a zero and it drives our reimbursements down. And so, you know, just trying to get everybody to go out there and get the, the revenue, non-tax dollar revenue, and, you know, get everything that they can. Uh, of course, the G M T money is tax dollars coming from the feds, but it's a pass-through, through the state, uh, but it is still tax dollars. But that other revenue from insurance, you know, that's a, that's money that, that these agencies could be getting that they just don't now. But it really comes down to a function of the ability to, to go out and bill for those services. Uh, very small county like Clark County, they only run eighty-nine calls a year. So you can imagine, you know, hiring somebody to do the billing for them for eighty-nine calls. Most of the time that person would probably, uh, not be billing calls. They'd be doing other busy work just to, to keep doing. So I think it's a good plan if, if the state can actually, um, follow through on that.
Yeah, that, that was my drill down. My, my, yeah, this is my next question. Because I, I know there's an im- im- impact on everybody if people don't participate, and that's where I was going next. So it would, it would impact Ada County even though, on the surface, it may not appear that it would be, but it would be impacting us.
Yeah.
And then that whole question as far as on public lands, that issue that I've discussed with you as well.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a component part here that we should be billing, we, not Ada County, but other counties.
Yeah.
Which then affects us. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that that's being worked on.
Yeah, the wheels are turning. Um, and as I said last week, I think the solution to some of the, the funding problems that we have in the state, you know, there are agencies within the state, Bonner and Boundary County, are working together. Uh, they have one, uh, chief that oversees both county operations. Um, but they set their, their mill levies just, uh, those districts just came up maybe four or five years ago. They set them at the max. They set them at four mils. So obviously they're not having a funding issue like we have in Ada County, but it's all related to a decision of the board made in nineteen-ninety-six to just, uh, set the levy at what we needed for ninety-seven when the three percent cap went into place. Uh, and now we're under one mil, you know, and so when you look at Bonner and Boundary County, their funding model is about seventy percent tax-based, thirty percent fee-for-service. And ours is the exact opposite. We're around twenty-eight to thirty percent tax base and then seventy percent fee-for-service. But it makes it difficult when your fee-for-service, your two largest payers, Medicare and Medicaid, you get what you get. You can't, you know, you, we could raise the rate, so it's difficult to run the agency as a, a business if you really can't go out and capture additional revenue, uh, like you would in a normal business model, so. But that, again, is something that they're looking at at the state level, at the Sustainability Task Force of, um, how do we do that? And then, you know, watching the legislature very closely this year too, to see what, if anything, they do with property taxes. Because anything that they chip away, you know, on our small amount, it, a small chip is critical to us to be able to, to maintain services, which is one of the reasons that we're doing a fifty-six hour work week. And, uh, I've mentioned to the board in the past that, um, you know, that's a, if you look at, the, the fire departments have thirty stations within the county. We have, uh, fourteen to fifteen, depending on the day. And, you know, we're doing, uh, Boise Fire, their total call volume last year was twenty-five thousand. Ours was thirty-six thousand, but Boise's doing that with more stations than we have, you know. So our paramedics and E M Ts are just a lot busier than the firefighters. And so ultimately, I would like to go back to where they're not working a fifty-six hour work week, where we're paying them a good wage. And, um, you know, we have a couple of ideas out there that I'll, I'll bring to the board in the future, but, uh, that's not what I want to continue doing, to have those folks working that many hours. I'd like to see them working closer to forty-two hours a week on, uh, a different, different type of schedule. But, um, that's down in the future. We've, we've got some plans, but, uh, I'll be, be bringing that to the board at some point in the future.
Uh, another question regarding the, the ta- the task force itself. According to the, the, the governor, state of the state, as well as the legislature, one of the issues they're going to be talking about is Medicaid, in general, the general Medicaid.
Yeah.
Uh, has the ta- is the task force engaged in that dialogue in regarding what we're just talking about? Having health and welfare, et cetera, engage on what we're, what our issue is? In that whole dialogue, uh, that's going on at the Capitol right now?
Yeah, Commissioner Daly, we haven't talked specifically about the Medicaid expansion because we did see, um, Medicaid, I believe, before the expansion was our third largest payer, followed by, I think, uh, Blue Co- Blue Cross was, um, ahead of them. And then Medicaid became our second largest payer, but it would impact us if, if they did away with the, the expansion because those folks that, uh, are currently on Medicaid that couldn't get insurance then become self-pay. And those folks are the hardest to get the dollars out of, you know, and in fact, we end up writing a lot of that off if they, uh, go to indigent and there's just nothing there. We end up writing off large portions of the bill or if, if not all of it. And so, uh, but at the task force level, we haven't really had those discussions about expansion. Um, I don't know if it, this, the thought process, it's not really in our purview, but it will hurt, um, E M S agencies around the state if that goes away. I understand, um, you know, some of the thought process behind it, but, um, it, it will have an impact.
So at, at this point, the task force isn't, hasn't focused on that in the sense of being engaged in?
Not, not up to this point.
And they haven't been asked by the legislature?
Uh, that's a good question.
For information.
Commissioner Daly, yeah, and I, I'll have to check with, uh, Bureau Chief Wayne Danny. Um, I know that he, Senator Harris, Mark Harris, um, has sat on the task force. Um, and Representative Blanksma has been to several of the meetings. And so, um, I, I, I haven't heard it come up in the meetings up to this point. Um, but I'll ask the, the Bureau Chief if he's had any discussions with Senator Harris or Representative Blanksmore or Representative Vander Wada, uh, about those ideas. Because, uh, um, you know, every piece of that will, will come down to how E M S is funded in the state of Idaho. It will hurt if we lose that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sean.
Yeah, thank you.
If there's, uh, nothing else, we'll be adjourned.